There you go.
Yes, we are. All right, people, we have come back from recess. Time of resumption of our regular meeting is 6:30. Moving on.
And I got the big one with the volume you can hear.
Excuse me? All right. Our first order of business will be superintendent creating the memos of understanding with three entities. Dr. Hackett, explain.
As part of the executive session that started this meeting, I presented to the school committee three memorandums of understanding with three different organized units, employee unions. The first was the Custodial Association. The memorandum of understanding or agreement with the Custodial Association is that they will be furloughed. They began their furlough two weeks ago. They will stay on furlough until the end of June, at which time they will be returning to work for, to begin the summer cleaning process. The second one is with the Teamsters Association, Teamsters Union that represents our bus drivers. They will also be on a full furlough. They will return in September, depending our start date and time, and will resume work. And then the third group is with the BEA with a voluntary furlough. So the voluntary furlough MOA will allow peer professionals and administrative assistants who wish to be furloughed or reduced hours to be able to do so. As we know, the, you know, the real benefit of being furloughed totally or reduction hours right now is the, is from the CARES Act from the federal government. Employees receive, if they are eligible, an additional $600 per week while they are on furlough in addition to their regular unemployment benefits. The town also benefits because part of the unemployment cost, we are self-insured in Braintree, are actually covered by the Federal CARES Act, which also makes it doable. These employees will be able to remain on their health insurance. The town will continue to pay the town's share of their health insurance, so they will lose no benefits. You know, the sessions were very amicable and I think that, you know, people actually appreciated the opportunity to be able to do so because, you know, the numbers just work out very well for most individual employees. So with that, I would ask if the committee would authorize me to sign the memorandums of agreement with the custodians, with the drivers, and with the BEA on your behalf.
So with that, I will understand, I will entertain a motion to grant the authority to our superintendent to enter into an agreement with those three parties.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Soros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb, the mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kikoros.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe. I know he's on here. He has to unmute, but the chair votes aye. This motion passes. Okay, resumption of number three on our actions, routine matters. We have two sets of minutes to approve. Our public hearing that took place April 27, 2020, and our open session of April 27, 2020. Are there any, shall we say, changes or additions at this time to either one of those? Okay. I think there's no issue with us taking them up as one motion to pass. I'll entertain a motion to post, to pass both sets of minutes.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Soros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb, the mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kikoros.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes. Any communications accommodations from the group?
All right, I was muting myself, which I'm sure many people probably appreciate if I could just do it during the regular day.
Hit the button.
I do have, I do want to mention, as we conclude the school year here, that I want to make sure, and I know I do so on behalf of the committee, to thank our student representatives who have been a great addition to the school committees, the conversations at the table. It has been quite an unusual year. I know that Angel and Molly are with us tonight, but we also have John and Kaylee. Want to thank them on your behalf as well. And also just mention that we hope that three of them will be re-elected. Molly is in her senior year and want to wish her very well and know that she will go on to do great things for us. So I did want to say that tonight, just in case we begin to run out of school year here to do so.
And we will be giving them citations, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Very important that we recognize them.
I'm not sure. I want to put them on the spot and ask them whether they want to say anything or not, but
them.
The opportunity is there. They want to unmute.
Hi, this is Molly. I just unmuted myself. I'm not sure if you can hear me. I just wanted to say thank you so much for, you know, everything the past two years. I'm really sad that, you know, the year ended the way it did, but I really appreciate, you know, the opportunity to be on school committee, so thank you.
Thank you, Molly. We were better for having you on within our group. Thank you.
This is Angel. I thought this was a very interesting opportunity just to be able to see like everyone come together and work towards the cause of like the students of Braintree and for the staff, faculty, and for the parents within like the district. It was really fun just to see everything come together, and this was a really great opportunity.
Thank you very much, Angel. It was wonderful having you.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have on the communications accommodations.
Okay, on to our next, from the superintendent and staff.
So the first item I need to have, as we do every single year, that I need to have you approve of me representing you on the South Shore Educational Collaborative Board. As you know, we do have quite a few students who are at the collaborative receiving educational services. The board is made up of superintendents from the member communities of which Braintree is one. And on a yearly basis, we need to, you need to re-up my representation to the executive board on your behalf. So I would appreciate if you could take that action tonight so that we can notify them that we have done so.
Wow, this is where I'm supposed to say something. Okay, Dr., we know that you do a great job for us. I'll entertain a motion to, to put forth such action.
So moved.
I have a motion. I have a second. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Soros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb, the mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kikoros.
Aye.
And Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Unanimous. Dr., congratulations on being reappointed. We look forward to you continuing doing good works for our district.
I'm going to be sending myself a certificate on your behalf, just so you know, so.
I've got some ideas to that.
Okay, thank you. Next item we have tonight, we have invited Dr. Scully once again to come talk to us about the current discussions around the high school graduation options. And I will, I believe he's on. Now we'll turn it over to him.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hackett. And I'd like to thank everybody for having me here virtually to talk a little bit about BHS graduation and the plan that we think is a good one moving forward. As you know, graduation's been on everybody's mind. There's lots of year-end events that we can replicate, but graduation stands alone. It's something that's looked forward to by all the students. It's looked forward to frankly by all the staff and the faculty, the administrators. And so we're trying our best to come up with something that celebrates the class of 2020 in a manner that they deserve to the greatest extent possible. We realize that it's going to be different, but that's the same case with districts and schools across the country. And not only across the country, but obviously here in Massachusetts as well. So over the last several weeks, I've had a chance to talk to the BHS building administrators, talk to central office administrators. I've received a significant number of messages and suggestions from students and parents, members of the community with lots of ideas. And so the plan that we're going to offer tonight starts with these overarching goals, tries to incorporate as much of that feedback as we possibly can, keeping in mind that times are different and there's only so much that we can do relative to what we would have done in a normal year for graduation. So our goals briefly, number one, obviously, we want to make sure that all the students and all the staff are safe. We can't pursue a plan, number one, that goes against state mandates, obviously, but also we do not want to put anybody in harm's way. We don't want to put the families of anybody in harm's way because we know how transmission works, and so that has to be a factor in what we're thinking about. We'd like to, as much as possible, provide seniors a chance to celebrate together. This is something that I heard quite a bit from students in particular and also from parents, that some sense of togetherness, even if it won't be exactly typical as a traditional year, was a major concern for them. We want to honor what the class of 2020 has done. They've had a tremendous four years here at BHS. They've had a tremendous 12 or 13 or 14 year academic career. Some all right here in Braintree. They're going off to do incredible things that will bring honor to the town. And so we want to celebrate what they've accomplished in the right way. And then the last element that I just wanted to include as a goal is that I think it's important to provide a sense of closure to the school year. And I'll talk a little bit more about this when we talk about timing, but school years come to a close, and I think it's important to have some sense of finality to the year so that students and families can start to make sense of this very different reality and think about what their summers hold and think about what their falls hold for those who are going off to school, for those who are pursuing work, for those who are joining the military, so they can start to think about it. So those are the goals, and now I'll talk a little bit about the plan itself. So we're looking at sort of a three-step process, I guess, if you think about it that way. And the first is that our original graduation date was June 6. We'd like at this point to recommend that, as a first step, we delay the date of graduation to June 13. And we pursue a live, sit-down, socially-distanced ceremony. Let me talk a little bit about that. There's a lot sort of packed into a small sentence there. Number one, as we have been trying to figure out graduation, as other districts have been trying to figure it out, it would be very helpful, I think, to initially grab one more week. It'll allow us to plan, but it'll also allow us to get a little bit further into the reopening plan that the governor spoke about earlier today. And so even adding one week from the start might get us closer to putting together the type of graduation that we would like to see. When I talk about live, sit-down, socially-distanced ceremony, I'll start with that term "live," which seems pretty straightforward at the start. But one thing that I heard and that all of us heard very loud and clear is that the idea of a virtual ceremony, well, it may be appropriate for some districts, was something that we wanted to try to avoid. So we would like to have something that, in some sense, is live, in person, in some way. The ceremony that I'm talking about here, and I'll talk about the details of this in a moment, would be a sit-down, socially-distanced ceremony, which involves at least a portion of the class arriving at the same place and going through the same ceremony. Again, with the understanding right from the start that this does not mean the entire class and two full bleachers and overflow seating all at one place. But that's our, that would be our first step. One, delayed to June 13th, pursue a live, sit-down, socially-distanced ceremony. If that's not possible on the 13th, and we would know that, you know, a week ahead of time, I would think, if that's not possible, then we'd like to push it out two weeks. So further delay to June 27th, and then pursue a similar ceremony. So just in a brief reading of what we saw from the state today, it talks about phases and it talks about a minimum of three weeks. This gets us closer, excuse me, this gets us further out from today and it gets us more likely to be able to hold a ceremony like that. So our second step would be to push out to the 27th and then pursue a same, a similar ceremony. And then finally, if a sit-down ceremony on the 27th is not possible, at that point, we'd like to have a rolling rally or parade-style ceremony on that day. We've already done some thinking about that, and I'll talk about it on an upcoming slide. But that would involve families and students in their vehicles as part of the ceremony. So again, three steps. One, delayed to the 13th, pursue a live, sit-down, socially-distanced ceremony. If that doesn't work, push back to the 27th and try to do that again. And then finally, if it becomes clear that won't be possible on the 27th, go to a second plan, which would be a rolling rally parade-style ceremony. Let me talk a little bit about those two options, the two different types here. So the first one, a rolling rally or parade-style ceremony, obviously, this would involve a significant amount of collaboration, as any of these plans would, with town and public safety officials. We wouldn't sort of do anything that would sort of go off into the streets of the town without sort of making sure it was clear and it was approved by everybody. It likely would involve the evening before some sort of distribution of a video where we put elements together that we would all want to view the same way. So say Friday night, and I'll talk a little bit about what we're releasing on videos in a bit, but Friday night, we get a brief, a brief film that hears speeches from our student speakers, introductions of the figures who may be speaking. I've already talked to the music department. They may be able to provide some virtual performances of, say, a senior song of the National Anthem. And it wraps up by saying, "We'll see everybody tomorrow for the rolling part." So that that part of the celebration is really filling in for the, for the coming up for diplomas, if you would. Our initial thoughts were we would follow part of the Independence Day Parade route up through town, up past Town Hall. That allows the community to become involved, that allows officials to observe. We're going to have a nice display already going up near there with the names of graduates. That could be a focal point. After that, if you're all thinking about it mentally, sort of bang a left, get down, come in through the access road to the school. Graduates would ride in their cars with their families throughout. There'd be opportunities for community support. We would award diplomas and have some opportunities for photographs at BHS. And then throughout, the whole thing would be professionally filmed. And Dr. Hackett could perhaps talk about that as we're going. We're talking about different ideas about how that would work. But we would have in the end a fully edited, professionally-produced video so that students would have both the speeches, the formal part, and sort of a record of what that process was like. So that's what a rolling rally or parade-style ceremony would look like. The other option would be some sort of sit-down socially-distanced ceremony. And we've thought through this a little bit, and a lot depends on what we can, what we can do safely. Obviously, that's our first step, as I mentioned. Also, what would work here in town ourselves, and also following the state's phases of their reopening policy. So here are three options that we've worked through. The first would be the full class, no live audience in a livestream. So in other words, we're looking at 425 students. If you've seen some of the ceremonies that were performed by military academies or even by the state police recently, that's what we would be talking about. So this wouldn't be the three houses close to each other on a small part of the football field. This would be using the entire football field so that we could space that out. People have already done some work here on our end to think about how that would look. With that many, we wouldn't be able to have a live audience. We would be able to have a livestream so that people could watch at home and so that we could get a record of all the speeches and the performances that we are able to do in a ceremony like that. Second option would be to have ceremonies by house with no live audience and then have a livestream of that. And our thinking there is that we go from 425 to more like, call it 140 on average. And that would be if we aren't able to bring the whole class together, or we are able to bring a smaller group, then we would do that. Still, we would have social distancing, you know, six feet apart, masks, gloves, no contact diploma pickup, but a chance for at least some of the students to be together on that day. And then finally, depending on what the regulations were, if we could, we could potentially go by house and have each graduating senior be able to bring two guests. This would be a challenge. Obviously, we all have heard the guidance and this would be a challenge to bring people together, but we've already done some work looking at the bleachers, thinking about how we would space that out, skipping rows, leaving spaces in between, alternating spots, and that would be a possibility. So we would pursue all of those from this point forward and sort of think about what makes the most sense and what we possibly could pull off as a group. So again, our plan would be, one, push back to the 13th, try for a sit-down ceremony. If that doesn't work, push back to the 27th for a similar ceremony. And if that doesn't work, I shouldn't say if it doesn't work. If it proves to be not possible because of safety and health concerns, then we would move to a rolling rally parade-style ceremony. Just briefly, the thinking that we have on this, again, is that I had a chance over the last several weeks to hear from a number of students. When I sent an email to the seniors shortly after school was closed for the rest of the year, I asked them for their input. Many of them, not surprisingly, offered it. I heard from a number of parents. I spoke with a group of parents a couple times. They're doing some other activities as well, so that's been very productive, and speaking to other administrators as well. And what I heard was, "Let's be together if at all possible and to as great a degree as possible, and let's try to delay to give us this opportunity." This probably does not delay as far as some might ask, but I honestly feel that sort of having this take place in June is in the best interest of the entire class. And we've built in a little bit of delay here, a significant delay. Three weeks is sort of the time period that was talked about in today's presentation that might allow us to pull off one of the ceremonies that I talked about in those slides. So that was a bit of a long monologue, but a lot of information there. I know you have the slides and the plan. And at that, at this point, I'll pause for questions or comments.
Any questions or comments upon this?
I do have a question. This is Carla.
Yes, Ms. Soros.
On that last option, you know, for the, you had the, yeah, the ceremonies by house, two guests per graduate. Can you also add the livestream?
Yes, you're right. That should be there as well because we recognize that at a normal, at a normal graduation, obviously, seniors have more than two guests. So yes, we would use whatever filming we have available for the other options for that, too. Thank you for that.
No problem.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah. Go ahead, George.
I'm just going to make a comment, so go ahead.
Go ahead.
All right, thanks. Dr. Scully, I want to thank you and all the folks that worked on this plan. I think it's a good plan, and I think if we look at where we were a few weeks ago when we first started to talk about these things, I don't think we really had options that looked like this. I think we were really looking at, how could we do some kind of a virtual ceremony and make it as meaningful as a real graduation? So I really appreciate the work that you put in. I think these are, these are all viable options. You know, obviously, hopefully, we can do the, you know, the most live event that we can do for our seniors, but I think these give us great options. And again, I appreciate the work that was done.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, of course. Mr. Chafe, you have a question?
Yeah, Dr., so Chafe, I'm just wondering, what was the feedback from the students?
So students have talked about a lot of things. One, they've talked about end-of-the-year events, so we're working on those as well. From graduation, their strong preference was for a ceremony that brought them together in some way. Many people asked for a delay. Like I said, we're probably not delaying as far as some people would like. I don't know that the, that the difference between where we're talking about and later in the summer will be all that different. And I also think it's important to have the school year end in June. So that's why we've built in two different, two different options for ourselves to give a little bit of time and then try to prioritize. Our Plan A, if you would, is to bring people together to the greatest extent that we can. So that, that's largely the feedback that we got. And I should say, and many were very passionate. They sort of, you know, they, as you know, you've spoken to four BHS students throughout the year, and you heard two of them just earlier today. We have students who are very articulate. We have students who are very passionate about their ideas. And so I think what they sent to me, and they sent to some of you as well because you've read some of the feedback, they really expressed how they felt. And so what we tried to do is incorporate as much of that as we could. Some of it, we did not, but to use as many of those ideas as we could in this plan.
Yeah, Dr., you know, I'm all for the kids getting together, the whole class. I understand. And that's what I, you know, I'm kind of leaning forward because get the chance, the kids to cheer on their classmates and who and how and get together. What if, have we given it any thought on to incorporating the full class? I know we're going to kick it back, but put the full class together and maybe try and do that parade earlier in the day so the parents can see, you know, be a part of it, and then have the parents drop the students off and they go to their seats out in the field. And we livestream it and do the whole kids' thing together. Has that option been coming up? Has anyone talked about that with you?
We could take a look at that. I think, I think the kids are excited about and we're partly trying to figure it out based with this as well. You know, as you know, the seniors' last day is usually a car parade where they come from the lake over to here, and they would like some element of that. I don't know.
Well, that's what I mean. We can, you know, throw them their car parade in the graduation. The parents can be a part of the car parade. I don't know if the kids will like it, but, I mean, that might get some of the heat off the parents.
I, I think if we did go with, if we were able to do the option where we're bringing either house by house or a full class together, we might have to work on that anyhow, just to make sure that we have safe crowd control in place. So there probably would be a drop-off process, you know, not, not just to show up. So we could certainly, if we're going to do that, we could certainly use some or incorporate some sort of a little bit more formality and sort of a loop around the school and a little bit of greeting as we go.
Yeah, I mean, like you said, you get good ideas with the speeches being taped ahead of time so we can livestream that. I just know all the kids I've been talking to, they want to be with their schoolmates, their classmates, so they can cheer them on.
Duly noted. I think we've got quite a few ideas. I think it's important that we all realize that, that the governor and science are in the driver's seat for this. So based on, you know, what criteria they put forth, we're going to have to, shall we say, curtail whatever we want to do to that. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I got a question, Mr. Devon.
Please.
This is basically from Mr. Scully. When do we have to make this decision? Because, I mean, I would vote on this tonight to go forward with delaying it and your first option, and then, you know, see what, see what's going to happen, what the governor's going to allow.
Certainly, the committee can act whichever way it would like. It would be helpful, I think, based on the questions that I've been getting about, when's the plan? When's the plan? You can imagine people getting anxious. To be able to communicate this to students, number one, and to families more broadly as soon as possible. I'd like to be able to let folks know, at the very least, that we're going back one week because that will relieve a little bit of the pressure of sort of the uncertainty. And then also give them some sense of when we would let them know if we're going to delay a second time. So as soon as we could would be helpful.
I think so, too, because I think so too, because the other communities are probably all, everybody's sitting back waiting for someone to make the first move. I know Wayman's doing a virtual and I'm not a big fan of the virtual, so I'd, I'd recommend we vote on this tonight to give you, you know, authority to go forward with it.
I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Chafe. Um, I think one of the things that's helped us is not making a decision so soon that we, shall we say, pigeonhole ourselves into a decision. Now, I think what you're saying, and let me, let me clarify. You want to give the authority to our administrators to, shall we say, modify this based on what we hear from the state and what we can do on those said dates. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, going forward, we gotta make a decision somewhere along the line. And if, as soon as Dr. Scully can get this out to the community, as to if we have a plan in place, will the governor change our plan or what we can do? That's, you know, we'll have to fall in line with his action, but I'd like to have a plan in place.
I think that's something that's uh recognized by all. Um, I want to reach out to our, our, our student representatives, Molly and um, the others. Uh, how do you guys feel about this plan?
Hi, um, this is Molly. I just wanted to thank you, Dr. Scully, for really take, putting a lot of time into this and thoroughly laying out different options for us. Um, I am a little bit concerned. Like, don't get me wrong, I am a typical senior. I wanted that together graduation and I was really looking forward to it. But as someone with a compromised immune system, I'm very concerned about having a, even if it's a socially distant ceremony, I'm, I'm just concerned just being in that big of a crowd and what kind of stands out to me as a plan is definitely that drive-by graduation ceremony. I personally just think it's the safest, the parade one. I just personally think it's the safest option. I know that students aren't gonna be thrilled with that option and, you know, I'm not myself, but I think that is the best option for us and I think that's possible compared to the other ones. But I don't know how other people feel, but I don't know, I'm just.
So, so if I can jump in a second, Molly, that's a great point. Um, and as we were thinking about this and as I've been looking at other um, other districts, they've talked about uh, you know, families and students deciding like, no, the plan that you've come up with is not for us. But perhaps that makes it even more important to think about Mr. Chafe's idea where if we could have elements of something, if we are able to do a, a um, an in-person or a, a sit-down ceremony, I guess, it makes it probably even more important to have an initial element that's celebratory so that you could say, participate in the first part of it and then say, I, that's fine, I don't necessarily need to sit with my house because I've taken this, uh, you know, the morning part or the lead up to it. So we can, we can think about that and see if there's a way that we can make sure there are um alternatives for those who would choose not to sit.
Hmm, thank you.
I think, oh, thank you, Molly. Appreciate your opinion. I think, I think um, I like the point that we give the good Dr. Scully the uh, uh, authority to make decisions based on what comes forward. What we are finding as uh saga, you know, unfurls that we, we, each given week gives a new set of circumstances. And being able to be reactionary towards this has been a positive. So um, I guess what I'm saying is, Mr. Chafe, are you making a motion right now?
If, if I may, Mr. Chair.
By all means.
I just have, I just have one more question for Dr. Scully. Um, because I think Molly brings up a very, a very key point. Do we know how many students would not participate if it was a full-class live event? Because I think, again, we want to make sure that we include the class and if, you know, if there's an opportunity to lose a good portion of the class for any of those reasons, I think we need to know that as well.
That's a good point. Um, Mr. Scully, I'm on a bet that you would, you would take a census, so to speak, as to where we are based on the type of ceremony we have.
Yes, I think one of the, I, the short answer is no, I don't know off the top of my head um exactly how many students would feel that way, but one of the elements of communicating to families would be to say, if we do that and a family chooses not to, you know, let us know, we'll have, we'll then have a sense of um what we need to account for to make sure that there's an alternative um for those families.
Sounds good. Um, Dr. Hackett, do you have something to add?
I do. I just wanted to uh mention that, um, you know, obviously, beyond and including the governor's direction on, on what's gonna be available, and I think based on what he released today, I'm guessing that um he may not speak specifically to certain kinds of ceremonies or outside events, but that his guidance may come more in the form of allowing more people to gather, um, allowing things to happen in outdoor venues. Um, so our, our real um contact and, and who we, we actually have been talking with throughout this health crisis on a variety of issues has been through the mayor's office and um the Department of Health through uh Mary Beth McGrath, who actually the mayor and I met with today. We uh discussed these options. Uh, I know that all of us uh support trying to bring kids together, but we also, as Dr. Scully has already pointed out, uh, you know, we're not gonna do so if um, if we're told we shouldn't. And if there's concerns about uh individual uh student health, um, if we don't feel, and, and more importantly, if the uh Department of Health for, for the town of Braintree doesn't feel like we should do this and that, or that we can do it in a safe way, then, then we won't do it. And um, you know, that's why I think from the recommendation standpoint, the fact that we have the option, we believe right now that we could do a rolling rally uh graduation. Um, given the restrictions that are even currently in place, uh, I think that we could really do that well to- tomorrow. So you know, the fact of the matter is, what I think we've bought ourselves is that additional time to make uh the right decision based on the right information from the right experts. Uh, we've gained our, we've given ourselves five or six weeks now from the move from the original uh first Saturday in, in June to the thirteenth and then uh, and bringing it out two weeks after that even to, so that we can just let people know there's a decision matrix in place, that there are many people involved in this decision uh in terms of our ability to do it. We know we can do it just from a logistical standpoint. Uh, but I think, you know, there are multiple options here that um, you know, I, so that everyone understands that this is the effort that we're trying to make. So I just wanted to make sure that, that everyone understands, including certainly Molly and other students who may be in the same situation, that, you know, our, the last thing we want to do is exclude students from a graduation ceremony because of, of significant health concerns. So um, you know, that uh, we've got time. Um, I think if Dr. Scully can, through your action tonight, get this information out to parents and students, I'm sure there will be additional feedback that will come along with that. And uh, as we have done and as had, as Dr. Scully has done all along, um, we'll continue to work with that feedback. And if adjustments need to be made, um, you know, we've bought ourselves a time and we've laid out at least a plan for how we get to a decision about what we're gonna do. So I would like to thank Dr. Scully. He's worked tremendously hard with his team, Housemasters. Uh, and I know that uh there have been several parents involved as well. I'd like to thank them for their feedback and continue to work on this. Everyone wants to do what's right for these kids.
Okay, so where, where we are right now is um, we had a motion that was put forth by Mr. Chafe. And, and that motion, I think, and it's, it's highly modifiable in that we're giving um the authority to Dr. Scully as far as what we, what type of um, what type of graduation ceremony we'll have based on the best influence that's before him at that time. Um, does that sound like your motion, Mr. Uh, Chafe?
Yeah, I mean, the, the motion I put forward was like the first one, full class, modify it with a rolling rally, but if we can't do it, I mean, I leave it in the hands of Dr. Scully. I know he's gonna do the right thing.
Okay, great. So this is just um, you know, this is a, a show of support, so we have a motion. Do I have a second on this motion?
Mr. Chair.
By all means.
Can you just, I, I, I'm not clear on, are, are we moving to approve the plan that's in front of us or an amended plan? I'm not clear.
Can I, can I just mention what I would really like you to move? Just, um, I, I, what we would really like, yeah, what we would really appreciate tonight is if you could just basically um authorize Dr. Scully to move forward with what he's presented to communicate to parents, the community and to students um for additional discussion. I mean, this, this is a pathway forward. Uh, we all understand it could change, but I really think that what you're asked, what we're asking you to do is at least endorse the options that we put in front of you tonight, understanding that there are gonna be a lot of parameters around where we end up.
Yeah, and I think where I'm unclear is the motion doesn't say that.
Well, I, I think that the good doctor just put it forth. We, what we're doing is we've just taken um, you know, the slideshow and our motion is just to support of that said slideshow and allows for some changes based on new information coming to light.
Within those options?
That's where I'm not clear. The motion that I heard Mr. Chafe state sounded like one of the options, not all of the options.
Didn't say that, I, I, and, and I'm paraphrasing here, please, Mr. Chafe, if I'm wrong. Mr. Chafe said he was, he was for one of the options, but realizes that that may not be what can happen based on, shall we say, the uh, the, the, the conditions at that time. So he was, I believe, he amended that to say that it was to give, you know, uh, a nod to what we have in front of us and, and allow the administration to go forward and with our support and to modify if, if need be, or, or if it can be.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Ms. Dolan.
Hi, it's Jen Dolan. Um, if it's okay, I'd like to make a new motion based on what you just said, that we're approving and moving forward with this, you know, very well thought out um plan that Dr. Scully and his team has come up with, with the understanding that because of the constant variables that keep coming up, um, he'll need to be able to move with those using this, what we're seeing here as a framework for the overall guidance that they're trying to pursue. So um, the motion I'd like to make for us is to put this forward as is with the permission for Dr. Scully to um modify it as he sees fit. And I'm sure he'll keep us informed as to what those changes might be.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second to the said motion?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call vote, Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Soros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamere.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kukoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It's unanimous. All right, thank you, people. Um, let's see, where are we now? We've got that. Um, we are on to, I believe it's four or five.
Excuse me. Um, if you don't mind, I just wanted to quickly show you that uh we have put together a uh BHS Events webpage uh through our technology department, um Andrew Maron and um, working with Dr. Scully. So this is now live. We will have a link to it on the front of our, our website page. And we will populate it based on um, you know, as things change. Uh, and you can just kind of get a sense for, this is, these are all the, the uh end of year events that uh are, will be in one location for people to be able to go in and check out.
Okay, um, any comments or questions from the uh committee?
Mr. Chairman.
By all means, Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to uh thank uh Dr. Scully for putting that together and the committee for approving uh the different options and I will work closely with uh Superintendent as well as Dr. Scully and uh Mary Beth McGrath to make sure that whatever option is chosen, um, that we meet all the requirements to maintain the health and safety uh of us students and anyone that would possibly be uh at the event. And um, you know, we'll, we'll continue to make that commitment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chair, can I just say, can I just say thank you to everybody? It's actually very, very helpful and very encouraging to hear the positive um words. And the whole BHS admin team, the Housemasters worked a ton to get this together and we'll make sure to get the word out to families and to students um as early as tomorrow, if we can put it together in a, in a coherent way and, and follow that plan. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Dr. Scully. Um, moving on from the school committee, uh first uh, uh, report will be our legislative liaison update by Ms. Cobb-Lamere.
Hi, everyone. Um, thank you very much. Um, as you can see, I prepared a summary of a number of um legislative pieces that have either moved um through the state legislature or is, or they are pending. Um, the first one, and I believe that John, our student liaison, had given a, a report on this back in um the end of November perhaps, or December rather, about the Student Opportunity Act. And um, that was passed by the Senate and the House late October and signed into law by Governor Baker at the end of November. Um, as we know, it was one of, we provided an estimated one point five billion in new chapter seventy-eight. Um, it also touched on four areas for funding and policy, which was updating the employees' retirement and healthcare costs as well as increasing special education enrollment costs as well as increasing funding for English language learners and increasing funding of students from low-income households. Um, there were also other uh opportunities and categories that would support that and uh they're listed in my report. Um, two of which I think would, the highlighted in the yellow actually um would benefit Braintree uh as a district. And one of them is expanding the special education circuit breaker reimbursements. Um, that helps, you know, helps districts recover special education costs, including transportation. Um, and the other one is increasing that cap on MSBA spending, which obviously if we get invited in, um, you know, to participate for the um high school, that would increase um the cost from um, from sixty million to eighty million. So it increases it by twenty million dollars. So those are two of the things that we were looking at when I met with Dr. Hackett back in late February, early March. Um, you know, we, we were trying to find out ways that we could tap into some of um, some of the funding from, from the Student Opportunity Act. I was able to speak with um Senators Keenan and Timmeltie and Representative Cusack. Um, I spoke with them and I also sent emails to them, asking them to support Braintree in securing at least, you know, a full seventy-five percent maximum reimbursement for the circuit breaker funding um during the budget discussions. Um, I was able to follow up with, with both senators during um, during the Senate caucus and unfortunately, um, the feedback that I got from them was that right now, the fiscal picture uh is bleak. Um, as we know, the revenues for the current fiscal year are expected to be um about seventy million below projections. And that for FY twenty-twenty-one, the estimated revenues are likely to be five billion from the consensus revenue determined last um December. So unfortunately, at this time, um, they're not even sure as to what kind of federal relief will be provided to the states and local governments. But both of them, um, you know, said that they would absolutely um ensure me that they would continue and that school funding would be a top concern for them. And I will continue to communicate with them, but at this point, they really haven't, you know, like everything else, I feel like in twenty-twenty, everything is either, you know, postponed, unknown, canceled. Uh, and it seems like right now they don't really know how the state funding will end up going until April. So unfortunately, it's not, it's not really good news. Um, so, uh, uh, two other pieces of legislation is the Healthy Youth Act, which was passed by the Senate on January thirteenth. Um, that would require medically accurate and age-appropriate sex education and health classes. Um, that would include LGBTQ and discussions on consent. Um, this would also allow parents to opt out. Um, this legislation, while it was passed by the Senate, it's now sent to the House, which um, it failed three times. it failed three times previously, so right now that's where that stands. The other piece of legislation that I've been following is the Safe Communities Act. I actually attended the Senate Judiciary hearing on January 24th. It was very interesting to hear from educators, school committee members and business owners giving testimony in support of this. One of, one of the key elements of this legislation would allow, make sure that it would keep mixed-status families together, because as we know from the No Student Left Behind, that all, all children in grades K through 12 have a right to an education regardless of their status. So this is being extended to January, I'm sorry, June 1st and I'll be reporting back once it's voted out of legis, out of the Senate. And that's pretty much it for now, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb-Lamair, for your work up at the Hill. Any comments or questions?
And obviously, Dr. Hackett, if you have anything to add to that?
I would love to piggyback on that just a little bit if I could through the chair.
Sure.
So to, to the point, we clearly do not have a lot of information right now about what's going to happen. Economically, we know the impact of, of the, of the health crisis is, is taking its toll. Unemployment numbers are rising and clearly unemployment is, has the direct impact on, on revenue and both direct and indirect impact on revenues. You know, we, in working with the mayor's office, remain confident in the numbers that we put forward for FY, FY 21. We are, we do benefit from the fact that Braintree has done a good job over the years in, in building stabilization and stabilizations for a rainy day and I, the skies are definitely cloudy and I believe that, I believe it's misting. So that the goal is obviously to try to play this out over a couple fiscal years to try to, in, in, to use, an analogy used with, with the virus to flatten the curve, we're trying to flatten the impact of the economic downturn that is beginning and that is being anticipated going into next year and, and probably the year after that as well. So I feel like we're in a good place, we're staying close to our, our delegation in terms of what funding looks like. The Student Opportunity Act, just to remind you, while there were mult, several school systems, particularly some of the gateway cities who, who did a lot better under that formula, who were going to receive significant increases in, in chapter 70, Braintree is not one of them. So the, the chapter 70 number that we have been given for FY 21 is actually, is, is called a foundation number, it's based on our foundation budget. There would have to be a significant downturn for the state to actually reduce the number that we would be getting because, again, it's based on the foundation budget and that we did not really get anything out of the Student Opportunity Act. So this is a good time for us, probably to not be too dependent on the state and we, you know, we, we believe that we're in good shape. I, I, for now, I also just want to point out, and I think this ties into this, we obviously, we've talked a lot about this year, we've talked about remote learning, we've, you know, we're talking about end-of-year ceremonies and we're talking about bringing the school year to a close in an appropriate, in respectful way. I want to make sure the, the committee and the public understand that behind the scenes, we are already working on what might happen next year, right? And there's as much that we don't know about what we can do next year with the school year starting as there is about funding, as there is about what's going to happen over the next couple of weeks. So, but what we do know is that there are some reasonable assumptions we can make in our planning and what we are working on is really trying to, to come up with a plan that allows us to be as fluid as possible, understanding that we may open on time, we may not open on time, we, we may, if we do open and we need to continue to observe social distancing, which we would expect would be the case, then it, it could look very different. There's a lot of ideas out there, the commissioner is, is currently stating that, that he will provide guidance to all school systems by the end of June, which is a little late for us, so, you know, we're not going to wait for that. We are already seeing some studies that are coming in out of different places. The state of Missouri actually has a, a decent reopening plan that they put together that I know the Department of Massachusetts Department of Ed is, is, is using some in their own thinking. We know there are some experiences that we're, we're seeing from school systems and schools that are opening internationally and some anecdotal information coming from that, but it is obviously, again, very fluid and we will continue, we will continue to work on it. When we get to the point where we feel like we have some coherent planning, we'll be bringing it to you for discussion. We will broaden the input on this, this, the planning to, to parents, to the community and obviously we'll be working, again, hand-in-hand with the mayor's office through, through the Department of Health. So I just want to say that all tonight because I know that people are starting to turn their attention to next year. You know, what we want to do is finish this year as strongly as we can, honor the class of 2020, honor the eighth graders that are going to be going to the high school next year, honor the fifth graders that are going to be going to the middle school, the fourth graders that are going to be going to the middle school as fifth graders and, and do the best we can to, to finish this year for kids in a way that we hope is, is, is meaningful. But we have already turned our attention on to the next steps and I, you know, it's too early to get into some of these conversations, but I just want to make sure the committee knows and, and, and the public know that those conversations have started and we will continue to update you as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, where are we with, I believe, we're at the end of our programming?
We are.
Public comment, have we figured out logistically how we engage in public comment?
I believe the panelists, the attendees, I believe, are able to raise their hand, but I would have, let me just check the settings. If we cannot get that in place for tonight, yes, we are able to do that. So you do have, yeah, Mr. Cass is raising his hand, I'll, I will open them up to talk, okay?
Please.
Mr. Cass, you're on.
Good evening, hope you're all well. And so I had a couple of concerns about the schools opening up in September, as well as my wife as well. As parents for two kids, one in elementary school and the other in middle school, we'd like to make sure that everything is safe to open up and if, and then also be an option if there isn't a vaccine available, that we don't send our kids to school. So I'm especially concerned about my first grader. I think my middle schooler, you know, if there are protocols in place, it's much more likely he'd be able to handle it, but I, I just don't feel as if the first grader would be able to adhere to those protocols. I'd also suggest it's not just about taking temperatures. I've seen some comments around social media about that. My understanding is that sometimes if you are positive, you don't necessarily have a temperature, so I also wondered if it was possible for the health department to explore whether we could do tests for both the students and staff and teachers. And I also wanted to suggest that just as with students, if they, and the parents don't want to attend school, there's alternatives, obviously remote learning, but also the same would go for teachers and staff as well. You know, we just heard high schools and I expressed their concerns about their health. I think there may be similar issues for members of staff and, and teachers. That's probably about all the time I have because I think you only have about five minutes, right?
Right, and that, that's okay. I think it's important to realize, Mr. Cass, if we've, if we've realized anything over the last several weeks, as, is that this, the, the information we're getting from the scientific community, as well as some of the other communities that help us, the medical communities and whatnot, that this is, this, the world, the, the very ground we stand on is shifting on a weekly or daily basis. So where we are right now and where we're going to be when we go to start school, I think we're going to, you know, shall we say, weigh any and all options that are available to us based on perhaps new technology, new medical breakthroughs and/or protocols. So your, your concerns are duly noted. Obviously, some of them we have been talking about and thinking about as we speak, so I don't think we can give you something definitive right now, but know that we, we are listening to what you have to say, we, we are speaking to some of those subjects and we will be coming up with some type of policies that will allow for, shall we say, our educational process to go forward.
That's right, I also submitted notes and, if you can put that to the committee as well, and I appreciate the opportunity to say a few comments, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cass. Any other public comment? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, for a second, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry about that, aye.
Ms. Soros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair. Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kikoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, thank you very much, people, we are now adjourned.